I'm glad to see my late sister who supported the crime in her program. Also, I see you have gathered thousands of people representing the organization. I'm thankful to all of them. Actually, I represent the Nagas. The Nagas are known for their bravery and honesty. This kind of act is not acceptable. Now, when it comes to hunting the head, honesty is not allowed. It's not allowed to kill. Now we have lost that honesty. Now, crimes can be solved within a few months. So, there can be law enforcing agencies. Now, SIT is your duty. Public and private organizations request. It is your duty to do work day and night and find the culprits so that in future, innocent lives are a tradition. SIT, don't think that we are requesting you. It is your duty. Now, if you're a child or a sister, how will you feel? We are no more safe. And also to the government, I want to say. You have seen. It's a sister's responsibility. It's a government responsibility. Law enforcement can't do that. Guimaraes is a smart city. Smart cities, CCTV cameras. What is this? Now, what I want to appeal to the government also. At least Guimaraes town has CCTV cameras. Another example, Guimaraes capital is forensic lab. Killed recently. Recently, a murder happened. A suicide was committed. So, it's investigated. It's not allowed unless the forensic people come and do the investigation. Then, the doctors and surgeons spend hours on the deathbed. On a serious note, I want to tell the government. You have to be responsible. We understand. The criminal cases are increasing. Killed, youth scandal, criminal case. Naturally, in a society where unemployment is a problem, criminal cases are on the rise. So, it's a good idea. At the same time, if you being a responsible government, it should be your responsibility to do the needful to reduce their criminal cases. That's what I want to say. Now, the mainline Indian street is busy. Why? Killed, mainline Indian street, every criminal case. That's why I want to say, don't keep fooling the Nagas people. To install CCTV, it won't cost so many thousand crores. At least here in Guimaraes, in Demopur. That's what I want to do. And next time, I will do it. I will do it. Next, it will continue the train. So, how long? It's a culture, Nagas culture. It's a strict SIT day and night. Now, CCTV, at least Guimaraes, it's forensic lab. Now, criminals, big hazards. Future, the guts. Yeah, that is what I want to tell. Thank you.
Government and holiday culture, government of Nagaland. Condolence message. I am deeply shocked and pain by the tragic and senseless murder of Viho Jhono Zau, a young talented girl on October 25th. No words can truly compare the pain and anguish of losing a precious life in such a cruel and inhuman manner. My heart goes out to the grieving families and loved ones for the unimaginable loss. Such a brutality has no place in society. Violence can never be justified. And I urge the law enforcement agency to please to leave no stone unturned in their investigation and ensure that truth and justice prevail. May the departed soul rest in peace and may justice be sweet and uncompromising. Signed by Sadhu Dhan. Now, I give time to visit our Khyoha for world of things.
Conferents, you have given everything for us in support in the form of case and kind and also in the form of physical support. We cannot be able to repay you, every one of you. May the good Lord bless you and also help you wherever you are. I thank you once again from the family that may the good Lord bless you abundantly. This is what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Saint Joseph's College Autonomous Jakama, 31st October 2035. Contamination of the act of murder. The Josephite family continues to uphold in prayer the departed soul of late Viho Jhono Zau, whose life was taken by an act of homicide. While the Josephites family mourns for her ultimate departure, Josephites continue to remain in solidarity with her in condemning the act of homicide. She was a graduate of Saint Joseph's College Jakama and a student. The right to take life is solely in the hand of God. Taking life of another person is a violation of fundamental principles of safety, dignity, and respect for life. We have the moral responsibility to protect life and not take away. Therefore, while we mourn the loss of our young life, we urge the enforcement authorities to take measures to investigate the case and bring their perpetrators before the law. The Josephites family express heartfelt condolence to the bereaved family. And on my personal note, as I stand before you today, my heart is filled with so much pain and grief to even think about what has happened to our sister, Viho Jhono Zau. This kind of unjustifiable act should not have any place in our society. And therefore, the Students Council of Saint Joseph's College Autonomous Jakama along with the students' community vehemently condemned this unjustifiable heinous acts towards our sister. As we navigate through this heartfelt, heartbroken, unjustifiable situation, we take courage remembering the words from the Bible Romans, chapter 14, verse 13, which says, "If we live, we live for the law; and if we die, we die for the law; for whether we live or we die, we belong to the law." May our heavenly Father have mercy on the soul of our departed sister, Viho Jhono Zau. Till we meet again, Viho Jhono Zau, rest in peace. And as Josephites, we always say, "Once a Josephite, always a Josephite." And she is still a part of us. And therefore, before I conclude, I would like to once again state the slogan always, Josephite always say, "Arise and shine." Viho Jhono Zau, today, arise to the heavenly abode where God himself toils and shine among the angels. Rest in peace. Justice shall prevail. Thank you.
I assure you that we're standing with you even at this moment. I wonder if being born a human is enough? If breeding is proof enough that we are worthy of this life? Or is a piece of paper heavier than the truth that lives and breathes in our midst? Why is the press release, media coverage, or articles needed for people to acknowledge the truth? And even so, why do we need pressure to do what is right? Why is truth so hard to follow? So hard to follow and so hard to stand on? I believe that everyone of us standing here will be fighting for the truth, isn't it? We're fighting so hard and we are pushing our limits. But I'm sorry to tell you all this, that we have failed as a society. Because when truth should be the only way to live, we fight for it. And when we as a society, we fight for our natural rights that is ours by birth, we have failed. It should be ours without any proof or evidence or any agitation. So, I question the people of this society. Do you think you're living right when injustices prevail in the society? Do you think you're leading right when the victim's family cry and mourn for the loss? Do you think silence is being sensitive when crimes last out loud? Do you think that you are doing the best in your ability when reports, condemnation letters, massive vigilance, condolence messages comes in slow? Freedom to speech, freedom to press, and yet we still are lips tight afraid of what might happen if we speak the truth? When institutions, authorities, people in power and the government ask us for proof to bring the perpetrators to the stand, are we really handing over the power to the right person? It is not hard to stand for the truth because the truth stands without any doubt, but it is us. We fear it. And why do we fear it? Because we have created a society where lies are backed by power and truth is covered by money and fear. Viho, we have failed you, my sister. We couldn't protect you against the cruelty that has taken our humanity. And I'm sorry. Even so, we stand here with you, Viho. We shall stand till justice is brought to your grave to beg for your forgiveness. To everyone here and outside, I hope you listen to me loud and clear. If you are not a part of justice, the truth, and the right, then you are openly declaring yourself as a degraded human being. Then you are ready to make bed and sleep with the culprits and the perpetrators. If you choose to deny the truth and keep your lips sealed so tight, then you are proclaiming out loud that you are okay with your families, relatives, friends, and your loved ones to be killed brutally. This evening, we are all gathered here. We mourn for the loss. But I challenge you, from the thousands that are here even this evening, I challenge you to the thousands of people right here. I challenge you to stand in the end. As you're standing here together in solidarity this evening, I hope you will continue to extend your hand till justice is served. Because we are a society, we shouldn't fail more. We should only head ahead. We shall do what is right. We shall do our best. I hope that you all heard it clear and loud. I hope that we won't have to repeat for another person who dies. Thank you.
God heals the broken-hearted and bans their wounds. Psalm 147:3. The Alumni Association, Saint Joseph's College Autonomous Jakama, expresses a deep sorrow and outrage over the tragic and untimely demise of our beloved sister, Lady Viho Jhono Zau, who was a cherished member of our alumni family and an inspiration to many. We are profoundly saddened by this heart-wrenching homicide that has taken away a young and promising life. Lady Viho Jhono Zau had graduated from Saint Joseph College Jakama this year 2025. As mentioned by one of the speakers, she was one of the tutors in economics department. She was known for her commitment, compassion, and contribution to the society. The Alumni Association stands in solidarity with the family during this hour of unbearable loss. Co-presise for divine intervention for comfort and solace at this time of grief. The Alumni Association strongly condemned this heinous crime, which has no place in a civilized society. The association appealed to the state government that the competent authorities expedite the investigation with fairness so that the truth may prevail and justice is duly served. Last, but not the least, my beloved sister, Lady Viho Jhono Zau. May your soul rest in eternal peace. Thank you. The Angami Student Union stands in deep sorrow and outrage over the brutal murder of a fellow student, Lady Viho Jhono Zau. The loss is not just a personal tragedy. It is a wound to our collective conscience and a reminder of the urgent need to protect the sanctity of life, justice, and education. We extend our heartfelt condolences to the family, friends, and communities affected by this senseless act. No one should ever lose their life for pursuing knowledge, speaking the truth, or simply being who they are. As we mourn, we also unite in solidarity, in resistance, and in unwavering demand for justice. We call on the authorities to ensure accountability and to guarantee safety to all the students and community at large. We also call upon the authorities concerned to take up benefiting course of action to the culprit when caught. May the fallen soul be remembered not only for the way her life was taken, but for the light, hope, and the potential she carried. The Angami Student Union will continue to stand firm to any act that undermines the sanctity of life. We will persist until justice is fully served. Justice for Lady Viho Jhono Zau should prevail for her, for her family, and for the dignity of every human being. Her dreams must not die with her. We will keep her memory alive through our voices, our action, and our shared commitment to peace and justice. Not just recently, but since her schooling days. She was also very excellent in her academics. She had dreams and aspirations. However, the act of brutality by murdering and taking away her life has put all her dreams and aspirations away. The Young Youth Organization also stand here to extend our appreciation to everyone irrespective of our tribe, our creed, and our colors who have come to show solidarity to our departed sister. It is without any doubt that we have faith in the SIT which has been set up. The credibility of the officers, the members of the SIT is unquestionable, and we do have hope that you will bring justice to our sister. However, let it also be very clear and loud that justice delayed will be justice denied, and the Young Youth Organization shall not remain mild despite the fact justice is being delayed. The number of people that have turned up this evening shows that this kind of act does not have place in our society today. Just recently, our city, our state has been declared as some of the center cities in India. However, incident like this not only demoralizes our people, but also people from across the country. Let us all be ambassadors for peace and also let us not only stand with the family, the village, and our sister on this candlelight vigil, but let us all be together until justice is delivered to our sister. Continue with your speech. I would like to call upon Angami Women's Organization, Angami Youth Organization, Angami Students. Because of limited time, I would like to... Of the Naga Students Federation, we offer our humble homage and farewell to our dear departed sister, Lady Viho Jhono Zau. This evening, once again, we are gathered here in solemn sorrow in remembrance of a beautiful soul. At just 22 years of age, Lady Vihonja, she has come to embody the very spirit of youthfulness from what we have learned. She was a very gifted basketball player, which clearly shows, which clearly reflects her discipline, courage, and the boundless energy within her. As we are gathered here in sorrow, let us continue to stand together in the pursuit of justice. Let us continue to fight for justice. For justice is the only solace which we can offer to her memory. On this note, kindly allow me to read a message on behalf of the Naga Students Federation. To the family members of Lady Vihonja Zau, not of condemnation and condolence, dated on King the 31st of October 2025, the Naga Students Federation expresses deep shock and outrage over the gruesome and senseless murder of Lady Eli Viho Jhono Zau, a 22-year-old promising young woman and talented basketball player on the night of 24th October 2025. This act of brutality against an innocent young life is a grave assault on the very fabric of our humanity and a painful reminder of the growing moral decay in our society. The Federation condemns in the strongest possible terms this highness and inhuman crime that has robbed a family of their beloved daughter and the Naga youth community of a bright and inspiring soul. And these are of unspeakable laws. The NSF extends profound condolences and prayers to the bereaved family, friends, and loved ones. May Almighty God grant them strength and comfort in this time of immeasurable grief. The Federation calls upon the competent authorities to initiate immediate thorough and impartial investigation into the case and to ensure that the perpetrators the perpetrators of this barbaric crime are brought to justice without delay or leniency. Justice must not only be delivered, but reaffirm society's trust in the rule of law and deter future acts of such violence. The NSF further appeals to the public to uphold peace and solidarity while standing united in the demand for justice for Lady Eli Viho Jhono Zau. The Federation reiterates our...
The Federation reiterates our unwavering commitment to safeguard the dignity and safety of every individual and to continue its fight against all forms of violence and injustice within our society. May the dear departed soul rest in eternal peace. Thank you.
Kekamitino, it sends down shivers down our spines. Uchis unu meku deza. Bekru, ubi be bekru deza, bekru ku deza. Suzu vorden hegeza apelle. Mu shiri. Utame jesse, hopelessness, sense of hopelessness. Sekim hisu buri, uki vode. Diha, duke du bokim he tu dega, uki zinu. Utio utemie, uki bonu, hakim he da li vimemo. Undu undu he, te te hakim heze, renna ke kimiye pe, temie ke kimiye. Vinhe, geze le juro, te we. Umo ki nu, zeze di zu xiri. Utio umhi nu nu, umho ze tu ki, ura nu nu, uki bu ki nu. Ha ke shoo, lele kenze geze hakim he. Mu ba geze, ho ha le se di, u, unu ce se we. Ukhe pe nyu febo, la mo diu liro, hakim heze, te te go. Mu, utio umho ze nu nu, ukhe pe nyu mie, ukhe si me gi, nu nu mu se liro. Temie, zo geze, temie ki, uki meru, uki pele. Ho ha ri, zidali ki ri, geze bu nu, ba de we. Uko mie buri, geha ke hi, ho ha. Kasri kenze, uko ke ko ba mo. Ukhe pe nyu futu, ho ha, ka pi uko ke tsu zo. Selah, temie ke hu buri, utio ke hu wa tsu xiri. Under no circumstances, mie bo mie bo, ke hi, ho ha, lele kenze we. Ho ha, kekru we. Uko, jo ni, uko jo nu liro, kenze tor we. Mu selah, uko pete, ho ha, pe tu mu li kenze we. Vihojonu Zao ha, atu zu xiri, personally pushimo. She zu xiri, te te ho xikke ke xino. Mu te, wo jaku go ki nu nu, ke to ke tsu mie go, program tsu ke su go ki nu nu. Tenyu ha fe hai. Tenyu ke vivu bo, omha proko se di. Puti hu yu bo, uke vor haunu zu xiri, urhi tsu di, upe bisse ke se bo, ne he geze le we. Die ke vi kekra ri, nu sho die, kekri die. Tennu tu ke pe nyo die, mu ce ke te fu kezdi, kekra ri. Lu ke hakinu, temie kekra kinu, vor ba de. Mu, se ko se, pete ri, pe ji we. Te je keze, ce ke ta, tipo nu. Candlelight service ha ko ha ri. U, bo ri, Basketball Association bo, ha ko hai. Organizes se di, temie kekra, lu ke hakinu, si ke mo mie. Pitsen di ju, tenyu te fu, ramie ke kiri zu xiri. Ze vor ke nguye di, hato ke vi, kekrim hato, kekra tsu die. Uko nyu fe, vihojonu ki, geze, bo re kraga se. Bo jaku tsu ke se, ha ko ha mu se di, uchi mo re tsu se. Ba u ri, tie, ni ko ke ke samie go, ki de buri, ni ko nu me ya, na si. Ni ko ke ti ke vi, ha ko ha se di, ma ke vi ha ko tsu ke se, gi nu nu. He go, we me kro nyo keze, mi jo nyo go, tu zu xiri. Diha, ma pete zida mo le ha, ma pete zida mo le. Mu, uki meru bo, baso le ha, geze buri, le vor la li we.
Humanly condemn the brutal and heinous act of murder on the innocent life of Lady Vihojonu Zao, daughter of Lady Kenituto Zao of Jakama Village, whose body was recovered on twenty-fifth October, twenty-twenty-five, near her residence in Old Minister Hill Colony Kohima. Lady Vihojonu was a brilliant student who graduated from Saint Joseph's College Jakama and came out in top number three in Department of Economics. She was a passionate, rising star basketball player who represented Kohima District Basketball Association in the second Nagaland Olympic Games twenty-twenty-two and won a gold medal. This year, she represented Nagaland State in the first under-twenty-three National Basketball Championship twenty-twenty-five, held at Saru Sagai Indoor Stadium, Go Hati Asan. She was a talented singer whose life holds great potential and inspiration for her family and for the upcoming youth. Her promising life was cut short at the age of twenty-two by this cold-blooded brutal murder, which is beyond the capacity of human imagination and which has shaken the hearts and minds of all educated community. The village council vehemently condemned this barbaric act in its strongest term and urged the law-enforcing agencies and the state government to expedite the investigation with urgency and to identify and apprehend the perpetrators, to ensure transparency in the investigation and prosecute the culprits and bring to justice under the severest punishment according to the law. The village council also thanked the state government agency for putting their best effort and acknowledges their sacrifices in the ongoing investigation. We appeal to all organizations, churches, and right-thinking citizens of Nagaland to come together and stand with us as we work collectively for social order and in our demand for justice in condemning this heinous crime which is intolerable in our Naga society. We appeal to the concerned authority to take concrete steps to improve the safety and security for safeguarding women and children's lives so as to prevent such tragedies in the near future. Today, we continue to stand in solidarity with the bereaved family and assure them that we are with you till the end. We pray that the Almighty God will grant comfort and solace during this dark hour. Thank you.
If there's not, we'll continue with the program. But before we continue with the program, let us all take a moment of silence. As we take this moment of silence, let us...
Your love lives on inside of me, and I will hold on tight. Feel so small, and you were always there to catch me when I'd fall. In a world where heroes come and go, well, God just took the only one I know. So I'll hold you as close as I can. Have to say goodbye to you so fast. I'm so numb, I can't feel anymore. I'm praying you'd just walk back through that door and tell me that I was only dreaming. You're not really gone as long as I believe. There will be another angel around the throne tonight. Your love lives on inside of me, and I will hold on tight.
Now, we can light the candles. Congregators, please pass on the candlelight to the congregations. And at the meantime, those who are carrying the bouquets...